First, we have an information item, superintendent's update. Dr. Swift.
Very good. Thank you, President Johnson and trustees. You were soldiers last week as we proceeded through approximately three hours of superintendent's update. I just want to relieve you right up front that this one is much less dense than last week, but we are on a full court press preparing for opening. And just a reminder to the community, we are focused on the reopening of our school buildings in the safest way possible for our students and staff, parents and community. We look forward to the day very soon, just a week from tomorrow, when we welcome our students whose families choose back to the in-school hybrid learning opportunity. So trustees, as we know, for this final quarter of the school year, we are holding two efforts, dual efforts of importance. One is welcoming students whose families choose to an in-school hybrid learning opportunity. That opportunity is hybrid because of the CDC required six feet of social distance. At the same time, we are also holding close our virtual learners who have chosen to remain virtual for the final quarter of the year. You will see this evening in a video coming up, a little bit more about how that looks at the secondary level. It is a very exciting time as we really focus on both platforms, both pathways for the final quarter of this school year. Mr. Cluey is going to pull up some slides just to guide us through this part of our work. Just a reminder, trustees, I think you know it by heart by now, but the stages of our return are very clear. Stage one, self-contained students at all levels, elementary, middle and high school students, those are our students with the most significant and specialized learning needs, pre-school through 12th, our preschool students, young five students, kindergarten students, and then some students in small groups at secondary as well. We will welcome them back on March 25th. Just a reminder that March 25th and 26th is more than orientation day. We have never done school in person during COVID time, so we will be learning the protocols. And there are many protocols for doing school during COVID, so the 25th and 26th will be great days, one day for each cohort to introduce to the school environment. As you might notice, trustees, for many of these students, it may be their first time in our Ann Arbor Public Schools, and we want to welcome them warmly and have them feel supported in the transition. On April 5th, we will introduce the week of April 5th, our first and second grade students. The week of April 12th, our third, fourth and fifth grade students. And trustees, we will begin at that time phasing in our students in grades six through 12. We are aware that as of this time, we are still mandated to do the state testing. So that first week of April 12th will be a little bit different schedule, and our principals are communicating that clearly with parents at the level so that parents know exactly what to expect. Our update this evening will include a special highlight for secondary hybrid instruction. Ms. Linden is joining us for that. Last week, we gave a highlight of elementary hybrid instruction. We're learning lots of terminology during this COVID year, and hybrid is one of those terms. And it has been our work, and I'm so proud of our instructional team and so many of our teachers who've worked very hard to help actualize this vision of what it looks like to do hybrid learning. So we'll have an overview of that at secondary. We will review our commitments to our students with specialized and different learning needs. There is a very brief health update and spring break guidance. And then, as always, as required by state law, there is, trustees included in this report, our interaction information, which you've been briefed on regularly since last fall. So with that, just a reminder to all of our students and parents out there, that it is our commitment to observe family choice. And so we understand that the choice of whether to return to in-school hybrid or whether to remain virtual is a very unique choice for each and every family. So our desire during this time is to make sure that parent questions are answered so that parents may make their best determination with their students. Had the great opportunity on Monday night to be out at Mitchell Elementary with Mr. Rice, Mr. Lautzana, with Principal Hilton, with Amber and Xavier from our building team who keep our buildings clean, and we walked through the Mitchell campus to really show what it looks like and what we can expect as we're returning to schools. We captured that on a brief video that we'll share with our board and with our parents and with our community because we wanted to show what to expect. And actually, what we saw at Mitchell on Monday night is the very same expectation that our parents can have of all 31 of our Ann Arbor Public Schools campuses. Here's the checklist. When you say, well, what will that look like at my neighborhood school? Here's the checklist. Use of masks are universal. That is by executive order. Physical distancing of six feet, we've covered that by CDC protocol. Small, consistent class cohorts, modified classroom design and seating. Trustees, you've seen seating charts, you've seen photos of classrooms, so we're beginning to get the idea of that. Cleaning and disinfecting protocols. Trustees, on the video, we have the Ghostbusters machine that really does ionized a process to ensure that our classrooms are cleaned and disinfected. We know our hand washing and hygiene. We were happy to see all of the sanitizer stations positioned throughout the building, as well as the touchless fixtures in the restrooms and at the water fountains so that students can practice and staff, all of us can practice that personal hand washing hygiene that is so important. Our indoor air quality preparation. Trustees, you've been hearing about this for months, and tonight we are bringing forward really the final and largest component, which is the air ventilation study room by room of our 3.5 million square feet in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. You'll see that soon. We also know that we're obligated, all of us, to do a health screening before we enter any of our campuses, both staff and students. And we've confirmed in every school adequate supplies of PPE, and we have backup. Our team is on that, as well as cleaning supplies. Ongoing efforts are staff training, our contact tracing processes, and our rapid antigen testing, as well as the vaccination process for school staff. Was delighted to hear from our partners this week that we are making solid progress in teacher and school staff vaccinations. That has been a commitment of the board to our staff and to our community and of the superintendent, and we are progressing through that, although our secondary staff is prioritized behind. So we're not quite there yet, but we are making good, solid progress. So that's an overview, trustees, of where we're headed during this time, this evening. It is clear that the Ann Arbor Public Schools, we have invested across our team and our community, thousands of hours in preparing for a return to school. And what we're working to do now is week by week, to share more of what that effort looks like as we reopen to in-school learning. So with that in mind, we welcome Ms. Dawn Linden to share with us an overview of secondary learning. We were delighted to be in a session yesterday, all of us out in our school buildings and locations masked up on Zoom, learning about hybrid secondary instruction. And Ms. Linden is going to share just a little component of that from yesterday. And also, our teachers were in session today remotely on this same topic. Ms. Linden's going to share just a little bit of that with you this evening, as well as our special education guidelines. Ms. Linden?
Thank you so much, Dr. Swift, President Johnson and trustees. It's my pleasure to be here again, sharing a highlight this time of secondary hybrid instruction. So Andrew, we'll go right on ahead into the next slide here. Dr. Swift has done a beautiful job highlighting the stages of return. We feel this piece is so important, we've got to share it just one more time. So these are the dates of student return. This evening, we're highlighting what secondary level, which is grades six through 12, hybrid instruction will look like. Those students will be phasing back in, as Dr. Swift shared, beginning April 12th. For those who are listening and watching, last week, we shared a highlight of elementary. And so you have only to look back, just a short way, to see a video about that. Both the videos you will see tonight on secondary and the video about elementary are posted to our website, so families can view those anytime. I think it's always a great idea to view those together with your children if you'd like, if they're very excited about coming back to that in-person option. As we shared not long ago, we're going to demonstrate in this video what whole group instruction looks like at the secondary level, and also what it looks like when teachers work with small groups of students. And then for a small portion of the video, you'll see a snippet of independent interaction with teachers. And so without further ado, we will get to the next slide, and Andrew will share. Oh, I forgot, we have the layout again for you, trustees, my apologies. This is the overview of the classroom layout at the secondary level. And as Dr. Swift mentioned, that six feet of distance is something we are ensuring between our desks and spaces in those rooms. So you'll see that demonstrated in our video. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dawn Linden, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and I'm joined by my partner Kevin Carr, Executive Director for Teaching and Learning. It is our pleasure to share a glimpse into hybrid classrooms, demonstrating what students may experience as we move together into hybrid instruction. Ensuring safety, connection and access to learning for all of our AAPS students remains our priority in the coming weeks.
You are about to see a short representation of what instruction may look like and sound like when your student returns to hybrid learning. Our AAPS teachers will demonstrate how classroom instruction will generally be delivered. You will see both in-person students, roomies, and remote students, Zoomies, in the demonstration. Whether your student participates in person or remotely, you can be assured that all AAPS students will receive high-quality, engaging instruction.
My name is Anne Reader, and I'm the Instructional Technology Consultant for the Ann Arbor Public School. The Teaching and Learning Council has been hard at work planning for hybrid, and we're excited to showcase our vision, specifically how teachers will deliver instruction and the technology they will use to do so. With the technologies we have available, our focus will be to maintain the connection between our roomies and Zoomies. The laptop connects to the projector and to the Zoomies. Teachers can choose to set up the projector whiteboard as an extended display, which treats it as a second monitor. This allows more flexibility when delivering content to students in multiple locations. The Ladybug doubles as both a document camera for direct instruction, but also as a tool to help showcase the classroom and allow for direct communication between roomies and Zoomies. The built-in sound field system enables Zoomies to hear the instructor through the teacher microphone, and the roomies to hear the Zoomies through the built-in classroom speakers. Whether students are in person or remote, all students should experience the same lesson elements that we have been encouraging during our remote phase: an engaging class launch, varied and accessible instructional interactions throughout the lesson, and opportunities for assessment, review and support as the lesson closes. In the classroom scenes, please notice where our teachers demonstrate an engaging class launch, showing the ways in which we might interact with students who are both in person and remote. We will continue to engage in varied instructional interactions during a lesson. At times, the teacher may engage the whole group, both Zoomies and roomies, while other times, an activity may require shifting between individual, small group and whole group instruction. Students may work in stations so teachers can provide instruction, monitor progress and share feedback with small groups and individuals. The type of instruction will vary based on the nature of the specific lesson and student needs for learning. Classes will end with a wrap-up. While the learning routines will sometimes vary, there are a few things you can consistently expect during this hybrid phase. Students will engage with Schoology to access assignments, class information and submit work as we have been doing while fully remote. This will support clear communication, access to materials all in one place, and reduce the exchange of paper for the sake of safety. On Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, regardless of whether a student is remote or in person, they will experience this variety of synchronous learning opportunities and activities during any given class period. This includes discussions, short video clips and investigations. Each class should afford time for student independent thinking and practice, time for collaboration and peer support, and time for the teachers to provide support and feedback to small groups and individuals. Wednesdays, however, will continue with all students being remote and engaged in asynchronous work, similar to what is happening currently.
Thank you to our extraordinary teachers, Veronica Cho, Munir Khalid, Manisha Monkod and Casey Warner, as well as esteemed members of our Teaching and Learning Council for their incredible preparation and leadership.
Thank you, trustees, for allowing us that moment to share that video. There is a teacher and administrator-facing version of that that is much longer, where the teachers are really demonstrating those moves in greater detail. This is a shortened version for our families to get a quick sense of what it's going to look like when our students are back in person. Those members of our TLC team I have to mention here tonight are Amy Deller, Ann Marie Mitchell Turner, twice, that's awesome, Sarah Andrew Vaughn, Jared Aman, of course, Anne Reader, who you see featured in speaking, and then you saw Zoomies, Marcy Harris, Tom Pacera, Karen Isley, Candy, Roselle Williams and Anthony Lauer there, who, what you don't see in that five minutes of a clip is about five hours of filming and editing down. So I just want to thank that team for their work.
Ms. Linden, I'm going to jump in for a second. I know that the trustees, because this is their governance, would appreciate seeing the longer version that we all got to share yesterday. So trustees will link that out to you. And it actually demonstrates parts of lessons. And I felt very comfortable being right back in the classroom with those capable teachers. And I learned part of a math lesson, so I was very happy about that. And Ms. Linden, if I may, I just want to give a public shout out to the extraordinary efforts of so many teachers who took that effort on and teacher leaders. It really made what was printed in our plan for so long. It brought it, it actualized that vision into reality. I think trustee Dupree was the one who said last week that it's so good to see the visual, to see it actually happen. And so I just want to give a shout out to, it's approximately, I think, 18 or so people along with our video team, and it just made, all the way down, trustees, to here's how you plug in the device, and I mean, all of the details to really get the lesson put together on a hybrid plan. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Swift. Appreciate that. Andrew, we're just going to hop back into that slide deck and review a few key pieces for our families of students with IEPs, including 504s. So last, when we were together, we shared this same information, but it's really important to us that our families know about our commitment and our work to try to ensure every possible support is in place for our students, particularly upon return to in-person. And so first, we'd like to share, this question has come up pretty regularly about masking and the level of support that we will provide for students who may have difficulty due to disability to wearing and maintaining that mask. This last bullet is the piece we really want to highlight on this slide, which is our commitment to providing as much care and patience as is needed. We know this is new to our students and our families, and it will be a challenge for many to keep that mask on and continue to keep it on. We also know that some students cannot wear that mask independently. And so we will be following those CDC guidelines and supporting our families. That's really important to us. We also want families to know that while we will do everything we can in situations to have six feet of distance, we do know that some students require staff to interact with them in closer proximity. And so we will, of course, exercise all of our safety precautions, but our staff will have access to additional PPE, and that's listed here as well. We do not ever want our students to come into our environment and not receive full support. So that's important for our families to know. In the next slide, we'll talk more about IEPs and evaluations. It's another big question. Many evaluations have been placed on hold because of our remote status and the pandemic. And so we look forward to picking those evaluations back up in person as soon as possible. And so the piece here, we'd like to stress is that our school psychologists have already begun scheduling those. Our goal is to complete those as quickly but as thoroughly and effectively as possible. So families can stay tuned for that. And we again, very much look forward to seeing our students back in our schools for that process as soon as possible. And then on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about those supports and services. So many families have asked in this transition between hybrid and remote, does that mean there will be a delay in services? Will my student miss services? And we really want our families to know that our goal is not to interrupt services in any way. So we do know that as students are coming back in in person, schedules may need to be adjusted. We want our families to know that. But our goal is to continue to provide those services in this current schedule, which is remote, while we're working on the new one, so that we don't interrupt any of those services. So for a period of time, we'll be implementing the same schedule while we understand exactly which students are back in our midst and how we can meet their needs in person. We also get asked quite frequently about paraprofessionals and whether those paraprofessionals will be in person in the building. And they will be. They are returning alongside our teachers. They are critical supports in our classrooms. And so whether you choose to return in person or continue to receive your instruction remotely, your paraprofessionals will be there as they are scheduled and needed. So Dr. Swift, thank you for letting me share that overview.
Trustees, this is just a brief health update. Ms. Bacalar is standing by. I'll share it. And then, of course, if you have questions, she can assist us. You know this chart well. It is the newly released as of February 26th, February 12th, and then an update on February 26th, CDC guidance for schools. You can see the four levels there. We talked about them earlier. And then on the next slide is exactly where we are. Ms. Bacalar reminds me that that data is published one time a week, so on Sundays. So the reason you're seeing the Sunday data is it's the most recently published data. And you can see there that right now, we are at 84 total day cases over seven days per 100,000, and that places us in the level orange, substantial transmission. Then on a percent positivity, we're very grateful, as you can see, over recent, over recent weeks, we have come back down on the positivity rate. So we're very grateful for that. As you can see, and some of our commenters mentioned this, in that level orange and red, six feet of distance, six feet or more of distance is required, not optional but required. So you can see there how we manage to make our reopening plan congruent with the CDC guidance. So thank you for that. I do want to share that we're offering the spring break guidance in tandem with Washtenaw County Health Department. The press release that we issued last week, we issued in partnership with the Washtenaw County Health Department and with the Washtenaw Intermediate School District. So this is not just the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and it is based on all of the best guidance. We didn't make any of this up. It actually is coming from our health experts. And of course, the top priority is the safest thing to do, as we know, is to stay home. The CDC does not recommend traveling. Strongly encourage delaying traveling and staying home, even for those who are vaccinated, because travel increases the chances of getting and spreading COVID. Although we may feel well and not have symptoms, we can still be carrying it. Each of us in our Ann Arbor community have a role and a responsibility to play. So we would just point out that whether individuals choose to remain at home or to travel, what is most essential and critical is that we all practice the behaviors and the mitigation strategies that have just become a part of what we do as we live during this COVID year. Those are to wear a mask, to keep a distance, to remain as much as possible within our own family unit. And if we find ourselves needing to engage with those beyond their family unit, to remember that outdoors is always preferred when that is at all possible. I will point out that the reason we offered this guidance was not only at the encouragement of our county health department, our own team and our Washtenaw Intermediate School District team, but it was also in response to many, many messages that I received and the board has received some of those from parents asking us to make a statement about spring break. So we're not only doing what we know is best from a public health perspective, but also in response to requests that we've received. Just a reminder that we all have a role and responsibility to play, a list of our family responsibilities, and then our student responsibilities. And of course, trustees, you've seen the school and our district responsibilities. We're so excited to wrap up this briefing and move into the room ventilation report. I just want to highlight a couple of preliminary parts before Mr. Lautzana comes with that. We have taken steps since literally last April to work to improve the indoor air quality in our Ann Arbor Public Schools, buildings and facilities. As you know, trustees, with buildings that are averaged 65 years of age, we knew that we would have a particular challenge with ensuring indoor air quality. So we've taken several steps. First is that all of the operations have been resequenced in the systems to bring in the maximum amount of outdoor air. So you will notice, our students will notice, our staff will, as they're in and out, that there is more air moving in the indoor school environment. Secondly, all of our HVAC filters have been replaced. Every Every system in every building was commissioned, meaning it was thoroughly cleaned and checked, and filters replaced with the highest level of filter that the equipment would allow. Thirdly, approximately 1,000 systems, as we said, have been recommissioned. We actually show one of our systems on the school video from Monday 9th that you'll see sometime, just showing what it looks like inside the system, how we have ensured that they've all been attended to. We, I will not move ahead of Mr. Lautzana, but you will see this evening, the, really the largest kind of outward-facing component of our overall indoor air quality plan, and that includes this room ventilation study that is being published today. So trustees, we'll, we have the opportunity to share that with a few trustees who previewed it and helped us with it. And then this evening, we'll present it in public session here. And then I believe it's by tomorrow, this will all be published on our website. You will note in Mr. Lautzana's presentation that we are showing on every study, if there is any area that is below green, we are showing the number of devices, air purifiers, fans, et cetera, that will be used so that every indoor area is brought up to green. Now, we know it will be also excellent for our students and staff to be outdoors when they are able to. We also know that we've heard from parents and from teachers who really like to open their windows. I just want to reiterate that the purpose of this study is to evaluate and assess the quality of indoor air without having the windows open or the fans blowing in the windows. So certainly, those things may occur, and they do occur on any warm day in the district, but this study is really about the quality of indoor air. So that's coming up in just a few minutes when the trustees are ready. Here are our next steps, trustees, and then we'll wrap up our update this evening. We are focused every day, every night, through the weekends, on our Stage One opening. We do understand that at this point, there are many, many questions remaining, both from our staff and from our parents and our students. We will continue to work through every question, every complication, every incongruence. We've not stood up the system in this way before in a COVID-informed school environment, so we will continue to work through all of those details. Secondly, we're just encouraging everyone, week after next, to have a safe and healthy spring break. We are very mindful that the behavior over spring break in our community, by our community members, will have a direct impact on our level of cases through the remainder of the spring and early summer. So we are very hopeful. Our community has done an excellent job, and I believe that we will continue to do so. We look forward, a week from tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, March 25th and 26th, welcoming our Stage One students and staff. Over this week, trustees, as we promised, the room-by-room air ventilation study is published. We will be continuing our middle and high school in community information sessions. I believe tomorrow evening is a number of middle school information sessions coming up. I know that our principals have reached out to their parents to make sure they know the time of, and have the link for those sessions. And we do have our secondary registration out there. Trustees, we're hearing from lots of secondary parents saying, if I'm not sure, how should I answer the survey? I've heard from our principals in meetings yesterday and today that they would like our parents, if they think that it's possible that they will consider returning, to go ahead and mark yes, and then we can go ahead and plan for them. But understanding that as the days progress, folks may reevaluate those decisions, we understand that. We understand that's a part in parcel of what goes on. Folks have mentioned this evening, and it's important to review it again, our next steps beyond spring of 2021. A week from tonight, we'll hear from our team about a robust summer learning session. Go ahead. That will include the extended school year and recovery services for our students with specialized learning needs. It will also include a full RECON Ed summer enrichment program. We're always excited to see the RECON Ed programming. And it will include all of our academic programming, all the way from lower L, all the way through high school credit recovery, and all of the programming. You'll be impressed. It is by far the largest and most robust of summer offerings anywhere in this region. I know that we had many, many students and families, about a third of our district enrolled last summer session, and we're looking forward to an even bigger summer this summer. We are planning now for a full back-to-school launch in 2021. This includes full in-person learning opportunities across all of our Ann Arbor Public Schools. Just reiterating, because I have many emails from parents asking, we will continue to offer separately, not as a part of a blended approach, but separately, a fully virtual educational experience, K through 12, for Ann Arbor Public Schools, students and families who are already thinking that they would prefer the virtual option for the school year 21, 22. I believe that that is the wrap-up of our superintendent update. President Johnson and trustees, thank you for your patience. Just important to reiterate these messages for all those in the community, and we're standing by, my team and I are, for any questions that you may have.